Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, a regular city council meeting, February 4th, 2025. And I would like to invite up Pastor David Anderson from Bee Community Church to give our invocation, and after which, Councilmember Gettle, if you would be so great to give, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you're able.
Hello. Yep, there's that. To our Vice Mayor, to our Mayor and Vice Mayor, and all of the rest of the city, council members, it's an honor to be here. It's always a pleasure, it's always so wonderful to come before you to provide the invocation. If you would join with me, let's pray. Father, we are so grateful for your presence and for who you are. Thank you for allowing us to live in such a great city at this great time. We're grateful for the people that we meet and the relationships that we form. Father, according to your word, you supply the need according to your riches and glory. And I pray, Father God, that you supply the peace, and you supply the joy, and you help us all to experience the love that you provide. Thank you, Father God, for being a blessing to our leaders. We pray that you would grant them the wisdom that they need to lead this city. And Father God, supply to them, Father God, even in tough times, the understanding and the ability to be gracious. Father, we pray that you would continue to do everything that's needed, open doors and make ways, and do exceedingly above anything we can ask or think. We give you praise, honor, and glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join with me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Anderson, and Councilmember Gettle. That'll take us to roll call. Vanessa, if you will. Councilmember Gettle?
Present.
Councilmember Noor?
Present.
Councilmember Learman?
Here.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is a proclamation for Black History Month. And so I'll come down, and I believe Vice Mayor is going to join me. Whereas diversity of social identity, including racial and cultural identity, contributes positively to the development of society and is a matter of pride and celebration. And whereas Americans of African descent have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was adopted to honor and affirm the importance of the history of African Americans, and to focus on the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. And whereas, the City of Maricopa continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, and the country, and the world. Now therefore, I Nancy Smith, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the month of February 25th as Black History Month in the City of Maricopa, Arizona. And we encourage all citizens to join us with celebrating the significance of African-American culture in its past, present, and going forward into the future. A great proclamation. And Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Wade would like to say a few words.
Just a couple of words. I wanted to dedicate this proclamation to a very special community member who has left us. And she brought a lot of class and efforts into different activities, ethnic observance since Juneteenth. And just wanted to, as I said, acknowledge her and present this to her family, and given the opportunity to do so. That's Joanna Cooper Vanderbilt. Vanderbilt. Joanna was a soldier. She was a soldier in the Army of American Life. And she made things, she presented activities and programs to the community that did just that. So we'll miss Joanna, but we're thankful for the things that she had done for and with the community. Present that to her family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, council, that takes us to a message from the mayor and council. Does anyone have items they'd like to share? Yes, Councilmember Marsh?
Good evening. At the last council meeting, on the 21st, I told you that Penal County was posting a draft of their new zoning code for public review and comment. Well, the county supervisors got so much negative feedback that they rejected the whole revised code. One of the soups was shown on local TV symbolically throwing a 350-page document in a trash barrel. So it's back to square one. Don't waste your time on the current draft. It's gone back to the drawing board. On the 23rd of January, I participated in the County Board of Adjustment in Florence. We approved a blanket variance for 274 undersized lots in the general rural zone. On the 25th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner, along with the mayor and council members. We have a wonderful business community here in Maricopa. On the 27th, I attended the Penal Partnership Water Resources Committee. On the 28th, the Penal Partnership Government Relations Committee. Also on the 28th, we had our first General Plan Update Committee meeting, led by Rick, Rick Williams. Good job, Rick. On the 29th, we had the Mayor State of the City address. That was right around the corner at the New High School, and it was an awesome event. On the 30th, we had the unveiling of a new almond tree sculpture here in front of City Hall. And we also had an East-West Corridor Zoom meeting. I'm suggesting that we extend that East-West Corridor past I-10 on to Florence, so that we have a direct shot to get to the county seat. On the 2nd of February, I attended Penal County's 150th Anniversary Celebration at the old courthouse in Florence, along with Councilmember Gettle and Supervisor Vitello. On the 3rd, I attended a briefing from our lobbyists from Nexus Consulting. Vice Mayor Wade asked them, what the heck is going on in Washington, DC? And they told us. And that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Marsh. Councilmember Noor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate you on a fabulous State of the City address, and thank the staff for putting on such a spectacular event for the city. I hope you were all able to make it out there, and if you weren't, you should definitely be there next year. The mayor knocked it out of the park. It was really fantastic, and it was a great review of what, you know, the city has done, and where we've come from, and the plans for the future. And it was just a really great time to celebrate the community. So, great job, Mayor. And then the tree out front, I was also able to make it to that unveiling, and it really is beautiful. You'll, I'm sure you saw it when you walked in, you'll see it when you leave, but you really have to see it when the sun is shining on it. It really does make a difference. It's a beautiful tribute to our city's past. So I'm really excited about having that right there in City Hall. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noor. Councilmember Learman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share about the Maricopa Chamber of Commerce Annual Award Banquet. It was an NFL tailgate-themed event, and Bob dressed up as an NFL team owner and looked amazing. We had a lot of fun, and they just did a really great job. So thank you to the chamber. And I also just wanted to thank the community and our staff for accomplishing and finishing the intersection at John Wayne Parkway and Smith Inky. It's a huge project, and I want to thank, I want to thank the community for their patience. I know it was inconvenient, but to be honest, it's such an amazing project, and I'm so grateful that our city is proactive and forward-thinking, and really always thinking of the best for our community and their safety, and that's really what it's all about. And I'm just really proud of when we accomplish projects like that. And Mayor, did you say it finished a month early?
Close to a month early, yes.
Yeah, that's amazing. It's a great accomplishment. Oftentimes, those projects are prolonged, so it's great that it was finished early. So, hope everyone is enjoying that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Learman. Councilmember Manfredi?
I love that intersection, too. It's a great intersection. And if you were inconvenienced by its construction, buckle up. There's a lot more coming in the next couple of years. We're working very hard for the 347 and to get improvements on the 347. If you didn't just hear, all over online, and Gila River shared ADOT's announcement that there's a final draft plan in for Riggs Road and the 347. The funding's not there yet, but we're going to talk about that in a second. But the, the work that's going to be done on the 347 over the next three, five, 10 years is going to be immense. It's going to be a lot of work. So I thank you in advance for the patience. What I talked about earlier was SB 1617. That's a bill by TJ Schop. He's our Senator, Senate Bill 1617. What that does, if you remember last year, when everybody said the governor took the money away for the Riggs Road overpass, it wasn't taken away, it was swept forward to 2028. SB 1617 brings it back to 2526, which means it lines up with what we need to do on Riggs Road for the construction, since we have final draft plans in now. This doesn't happen because we're sitting around as a council or staff waiting for this stuff to happen. This happens because we are all working very hard to get the 347 fixed. Just this past week, actually, I attended the Regional Transit Advisory Council, which I serve on the board, for their legislative day. So we sat at the, at the Capitol, talking to our legislators about what's important and good news. A lot of our legislators know about this thing called the 347. They say they get a lot of letters about it. They say, of course, they get us talking to them every time we see them. And the greatest part is when you have legislators from other districts, they don't represent us, but they know the headache that we have with the 347. I also attended the CAG meeting, which was another legislative day. So it was kind of like deja vu, because you get to see a lot of the same legislators. And it was a week after, or four days later, and they were like, we know, we know. And I'm like, I know, but I got to tell you, it's the 347. That's the number one priority. And it's great to hear that everyone in the state that has anything to do with transportation knows those three numbers by heart, and they know the faces that they see. And they know that they're going to be asked about 347 by our staff. They're going to be asked about the 347 by their council members, and they're going to be asked about the 347 by you. And how do you do that? There's a website, I'm sure the mayor's going to mention it in her little talk in a second. There's a website that you can go to, fill it out, tell them the stories that you're having, because every story resonates when the legislators read them. I also attended a meeting for PRTA, that's Penal Regional Transit Authority. And in PRTA, we're talking about how that money that was collected for Prop 416 and Prop 417 here in Penal County is getting returned. Currently, about 21 million of it has been returned to the businesses in Penal County that have requested refunds. Now, as you know, with taxes, the business pays the sales tax, not you, technically, and then you guys pay the business back for it when you buy something, right? So you're paying the tax, but the business is getting the refund. The goal is to find out what we're going to do with the money that's left over, because not every business is going to get a refund. And although a lot of the money's going to be taken away for interest and expenses, for refunding the money and all that, there's going to be money left over. So the argument is, where, what are we going to do with it? Some people want it to go to ADOT, and then I'll just get eaten up at ADOT for road improvements somewhere in the state of Arizona, right? Some people argue it should go to Penal County. Some people argue that it should go to the PRTA, some people, and there's a lot of discussion about it. My goal is to make sure that it goes to the city of Maricopa, at least some of it, so that we can use it on roads, which is why we paid the tax in the first place. Let me see, I got RTA, PR. I don't talk this much usually during these things, but it's been a busy week. CAG, final design, new bill. Oh, I mentioned it before, but one of the most important things that we had happen is when there was that Riggs Road final design came out, and I want to thank Brett Roberts and Teresa Martinez, and every one of the representatives that we've had that have worked hard for this funding. But when it came out that there was the final designs, and I was like, oh, this is really cool. I saw the mayor share it, I saw the local news share it, I saw ADOT share it. But the most important person that I, or organization, that I seen clicked "Share" on Facebook and shared it to their community, as well as the whole community, or Facebook community as a whole, was Gila River Indian Community. So a lot of people say, oh, they're not bought in. Nothing's going to happen on the 347 until they're bought in. Guess what? They're bought in. They want this stuff to happen. They want the 347 expanded. They want the Riggs Road overpass to happen. They want this stuff. So it's a good thing. We got a lot of good news happening, and a lot of pieces are coming together for the 347. It's the Queen Creek Road and I-10 interchange, with thankfully, that's going forward with the I-10 expansion. There's the Riggs Road expansion, which is going forward, and yes, it's going to be made for three lanes in each direction on Riggs Road. Don't worry. And then, of course, there's all the work that we're doing here in town to make everything ready for when the funding comes available, that we could put a third lane on each side. So there's a lot of work happening. Our council's doing a ton of stuff to get it done for you. And that's about it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge the youth council that was, served its host and hostesses during the State of the City address. These are young people who volunteer for just about anything that comes across, and they do a really good job in supporting the activity as well. And so they work, and we're going to have them, going to have a little bit of fun here on Friday, take them over to the legislature, so they'll see how it operates. Have a chance, Representative Martinez is going to meet us, and Representative Schultz, or Representative Schultz?
Senator.
Senator, Senator Schultz will also come in and have a chance to talk with the young people. And I think that it'll give them an opportunity to see that they don't just work, they do get a chance to have a little bit of fun in that work, and they'll learn something at the same time. So looking forward to spending the time with them. I went last year, with the group last year, and it was really encouraging to see how they participated in the activities, how they learned, and then where it was shared with them later on. So just acknowledge those young people. If you know one that's a person that's on, that is in the youth council, give them a hug or a pat on the back and say, good job, because they, they really are making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, just a couple of things. I had the honor and privilege of providing graduate certificates to CERT members who went through 20 hours of training and ended up certified to help as a vital part of our emergency system. And I applaud them for doing that. It's completely volunteer, and now they're ready and willing to serve for all different situations, but their most important job would always be in an emergency system. I also attended the Maricopa Awards Banquet. It was a fun event. I don't want to elaborate too much more, since it has been elaborated on. However, our Maricopa Police Foundation won Nonprofit of the Year. Did I have that right? Yep. Nonprofit of the Year for all the work that they've done. So if you don't mind, give them a round of applause. And in regards to my Maricopa State of the City, the, I want to thank the council, and I want to thank them and let them know that I actually received a phone call from a mayor of a major city, who said, I have never considered putting my council members in the State of the City, and I'm going to be doing that. So all of them participated, and they did a fantastic job. I thank you. And I thank staff, because without staff and putting this together, it wouldn't be possible. But one piece of information, well, two, you can watch this State of the City on the city website, on YouTube, you can watch it there as well. And it gives so much information about what has happened over the year. And I give a big picture perspective, because so many people think the world revolves around 347. Well, a lot of it does, but 347 is not the end-all, be-all. And there is a big picture for other avenues in and out of Maricopa, and also for providing high-paying jobs in our industrial business park. So the State of the City covers all of that, and I think that you'd be missing out if you didn't get informed by watching the State of the City video. I won't mention the unveiling of the beautiful pecan tree, or I guess I just did, but take a look during the sun. I completely agree about that. Also, I'm hoping that some of you attended, I know that Bill Roberts did, attended the online East-West Corridor feedback opportunity. I attended that as well, and some additional council members. And I want to talk about what this, how this is important to the city of Maricopa. This is an extension of the Sonoran Desert Parkway. They call it the East-West Corridor. It's been called that all the way back to when Kelly Anderson was the mayor. It's been on the road as the East-West Corridor. um, Kelly Anderson was the mayor, it's been on the road as the east-west corridor, but we're calling it the Sonoran Desert Parkway. The reason why this is so important, it's obviously another safe route in and out of Maricopa, it provides great access to our industrial business park. When we have those 36,000 jobs operating there, we're going to need this Sonoran Desert Parkway, this east-west corridor, to feed all of the employees that go there, and plus the transit that will happen for those businesses. Um, it also provides another safe route in case of emergency, it also provides for more economic development in Maricopa. As you know, economic development likes to surface those roads that they see many cars on, many vehicles, and so there's many reasons for the importance of this. You still have an opportunity to put your feedback in, if you'd like to go to the Penal County website, you can look for the east-west corridor feedback opportunity, and you can provide it there. Let's see, I also attended the Creative Minds Series, that's an art opportunity to get inside the mind of an artist, which was fascinating, um, so I know you see those that are advertised on Facebook, so consider going, because it's an awful, awesome opportunity. And I also attended the Maricopa Historical Society Tales and Trails Dinner, and every year that I go, I learn something new about the history of Maricopa, it's quite fascinating. All right, so, count, time's up. Councilmember Manfredi mentioned so many more important things for 347. When I saw that ADOT had selected the solution for the overpass of Riggs Road, I was thrilled. And then I saw SB 1617, which is what he mentioned regarding Senator Schop, pulling those funds back into fiscal year '26, and you combine that with the Riggs Road overpass announcement, that says they will go out for bid construction in early 2026. So it's all lining up, things are beginning to happen, I'm very excited about that, and, um, I think that's it for me. Any last chances? All right, that ends the report from the mayor and council, and it'll take us to the report from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, just to kind of continue with the theme, the other exciting thing that we have occurring this week, on Thursday, the State Transportation Board will have their first online or virtual meeting to talk about, uh, really transportation statewide. We expect that 347 will have a, uh, a feature as part of that discussion, and certainly we'll, we'll try to participate as best we can. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention, we do have Citizen Leadership Academy starting back up again in April, so we'll soon be opening up those, that application process, encourage anyone that's, that's willing and able and interested in being a, a great community partner, and, and learning more about how the city functions, and some of our, our community aspects, police, fire, budgeting, maybe even Global Water and ED3, and, and some of our partner utilities, um, how that all comes together and how a city operates, uh, we go through that program a couple times a year, and so this is a great opportunity for citizens to, to come and, and learn, and ask questions, and get those questions answered directly from those that are, are working on the day-to-day to, uh, improve quality of life here in Maricopa. So excited for that coming here in the near future.
Very good, thank you, city manager. So one additional thing on the mayor, a message from the mayor, I did want to mention, because he brought up the February 6th meeting, it's a virtual meeting with ADOT, if you'd like to listen in, you can do that, simply by hitting the connect button, but you can also turn in a speaker card and speak about State Route 347, and how important that is for the five-year plan. But, if you're a little shy, or, or don't have the time to do that, please, 347facts.com. If every, he knew I would mention it, if every single one of you would just go there, fill out the form, it's so easy, it goes to over 100 elected officials, including ADOT and the ADOT State Transportation Board meeting, and all I ask that you do is put, say to them, put three, SR 347 in the five-year plan, and that's, that would be sufficient for all of you to do, and if we had 100 new emails and they got the message, that would be fantastic. You can even make that your header now, we, the 347facts.com team used to fill in a header, but now you can put your own header in there. So please, consider doing that. All right, that'll take us to the call of the public, I do have three speaker cards at this time, so I'll call them up first, and then anyone else who would like to approach the podium, please feel free to do so. Um, the first is Peg Chapados.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Here tonight to share multiple good news. First of all, I want to congratulate you and thank you for another wonderful State of the City. Staff did a great job, you guys did a great job, but I learned something that I didn't know. We got a lot of cutie people here on staff. I, I got to saw some pictures, see some pictures that I hadn't seen before, so, good addition. The second one was, I love what you've done with the fountain out front, that only worked for about a week after we built it, so, that looks really nice. But first and foremost, I'm here tonight as the Secretary of the Friends of the Arts. We are having our third annual fundraising event on Saturday, March 1st. We are debuting something called Parityville Playhouse. It is a game that is based on parodied board, card, casino, carnival, TV show, and children's games. It's play at your own pace, the object is to play a, a variety of games, you earn play money, and then you buy the eight rooms in the playhouse. We have some surprises and drawings for prizes, but one of the things we're doing differently, this is a joint fundraiser, so we have reached out to a number of organizations throughout the city, and they are going to be the facilitators of the games. At the end of the evening, we will take those net proceeds, and we will divide them evenly, equally amongst the groups that are participating. Right now, we have 12 groups that have confirmed, and we are still waiting for confirmation on a few more, but I want to share with you who those are. Obviously, Maricopa Friends of the Arts, we have Desert Sunrise, FCCLA Education Pros, the Heritage Academy Band, the Heritage Academy Textiles Groups, Heritage Academy Theater, Maricopa Arts Council, Maricopa Chorus, Maricopa Cultural Activity Center, better known as the Friends of the Library of Maricopa, the Maricopa Music Circle, our award-winning Maricopa Police Department Police Cadets, the Professional Firefighters of Maricopa Local 4561, and Stitches for Love. We're still waiting to hear from a couple other nonprofits, as well as some of the folks from Maricopa High School, so we encourage you to come out. Um, tickets are on sale now on our website, maricopafriendsoftheartsallonenword.com. If you have any questions, you can contact us, maricopafriendsofthearts, info@maricopafriendsofthearts@gmail.com. Um, tickets are $75. If you're an MFOTA member, you get a 15% discount, so they're 63.75. The reason that the price is a little higher is, that's the only thing we're doing that night, is letting you play games. Um, we want to make sure that we're successful, so we can share the wealth with all of the amazing groups that we have here in the city of Maricopa. So what kind of games are you gonna be playing? We have throwing oversized dice, spinning wheels, answering questions, writing down responses, identifying images, tossing beanbags. It's really fun, it's play at your own pace, a lot of the games you play singly, but there may be 12 people at the table, some of them you can play with a partner, with a pair, two heads are sometimes better than one. So we encourage you to check out our website, come on out for a fun evening, and support a lot of the great groups we've got here in this city. Um, and if I have any time left, Mayor, council, I wanted to congratulate you on the direction you're taking on the facilities rental. I was watching that council meeting, because I would've been here, you know that, but I had the flu. Um, I like the direction that you're heading, but what I'd like to encourage you to do is seek out those statistics that you weren't presented, on the library, on the community center. I think all three of those major sites have different demographics and different needs when people come to use city facilities. I'd also like to see you continue that discussion on, maybe some of the rentals can be zero, but also maybe establish a range, based on what's happening, what the needs of staff are, what the needs for setup are, what the needs for using equipment and furniture. Let's make this a user-friendly city, so we don't have to have anybody come to the microphone and say all the things that aren't happening in city facilities. We should have more than enough room to accommodate more than enough events and activities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker card is Andrew Kuntz.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, it's a privilege to speak to you today. My name is Andrew Kuntz, I am the, uh, newly-appointed Director of Community Relations for Maricopa Community Theater. Uh, while MCT is enthusiastic about the development of the new Performing Arts Center in the old police station, we continue to have significant concerns regarding the proposed hourly usage rates for the facility. We acknowledge and appreciate the city's efforts in reducing the original pricing, however, the current fees remain prohibitively high for MCT to manage financially. As a result, MCT will be forced to continue utilizing our existing space while the new PAC sits unused. It is well-known that the city's community rooms and facilities are underutilized. The primary reason for this is not a lack of demand, there is no shortage of nonprofit arts and other organizations in Maricopa seeking a space. Rather, the issue lies in the costs, the proposed rates are still far beyond what, what nonprofits' arts groups can reasonably afford. To put it plainly, the hourly rates being, currently being suggested would effectively double our production budget for each season. By the second show of the season, MCT's budget would basically be depleted, making it very difficult or impossible to continue producing, and simply because the city hasn't set a pricing structure that is financially feasible for the groups it aims to serve. So I respectfully ask the council to reconsider the proposed rates, especially in comparison to what we are currently, currently paying, uh, to use the space at Leading Edge Academy. I am more than happy to provide those figures, should you require them again. I also want to express MCT's gratitude for the city's new grant program. Um, however, I would like to propose the creation of a new, dedicated, recurring grant, or sponsorship fund, that, for arts-based nonprofits in Maricopa. However, this fund would be specifically dedicated to fully covering the hourly fees for using the community spaces in question. Uh, given that the average salary city employee now earns over $100,000 per year, there's certainly room within the budget to support, uh, these important cultural organizations. These nonprofits have already demonstrated their commitment to the community by establishing themselves and enduring through Maricopa's rapid growth. Madam Mayor, council members, I urge you to reject the current rates, and work with us to create a solution that will foster the growth of arts in Maricopa, the said city of the arts. Uh, approving the current proposed fees would be a disservice to those of us striving for a viable performance space, and it would undermine the city's support of its nonprofits' arts community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And our last speaker card is Cherish Forbes.
Oof, sorry, I have lost my voice, so I apologize. Uh, my name is Cherish Forbes, and I'm the Vice President of Maricopa Community Theater. I've served on the board for MCT since we became a nonprofit eight years ago. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on the proposed pricing changes for the community rental spaces, and I commend the council for reassessing the prices that were established last year. In my opinion, the changes do not go far enough, the pricing is still too high for any regular use. Um, I want to throw out some numbers for you, so that you can kind of understand, based on our productions. The average cost for a main stage production is $4,895, and that's without the cost of the rehearsal space in there. This includes rights for the production, music, choreography, set, props, costumes, all of that fun stuff. Per production, we need to meet for 100 to 110 hours for rehearsal time. Um, this includes auditions, music, choreography, blocking, uh, character development, things like that. And if we were to use these new proposed rates for just the main room at the community center, which is less than we actually need, it would cost us $5,500 to $6,000, which is more than our entire production. So it would be fiscally irresponsible for us to double the cost of each production, to use a space that doesn't really suit our needs, was constantly changing every single time we went in there, and then after the new leadership was put in place, uh, we made, they made sure that we did not feel welcome there ever again. Um, I heard mentioned several times in the last meeting about upcoming discussions regarding partnerships with the city, and for over 10 years, MCT did have a partnership with the city with our summer theater camp. We also had an MOU in place for a per-project price for rehearsal space in the community center, and the summer camp and MOU were both canceled last year, this left us scrambling to try to find somewhere else that we could rehearse, and we did end up forging an alliance, and have been able to put on several productions since the agreements were severed with the city. Um, I was pleasantly surprised to hear that so many of the, on the council believe that these spaces should be free, or as close to free as possible. I am glad that this is the current stance, I wish I had heard those statements last year, as the MOUs were taken from the organizations that have partnerships with the city. Um, the way to consistently fill these spaces is not with a random party or a gala, it's actually, you need to bring life to these spaces on a regular, recurring basis. Book clubs, writing clubs, improv groups, zumba classes, music rehearsals, but these prices don't encourage creativity or innovation, they stifle it. Maybe, like, the city could consider a sliding pay scale for nonprofits, or getting a think tank together to come up with an idea of how these nonprofits can use these spaces. Again, the proposed changes don't go far enough, and should really be reassessed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of the speaker cards, would anyone else like to approach the podium? Yes, please come.
Hi, good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council Members. Uh, my name's Susan Bonzante, I live in Glenwild, and I saw that Global Water is gonna do a presentation this evening, and I was hoping that we might get an answer to a question that I've had for a while. Um, quite a while ago, we received, many of us got a letter in the mail regarding high fluoride levels, but there was never any follow-up about that, never saw anything with regards to what was being done about it, um, or if it was mitigated in any way. Also, um, I did do just a small amount of research to see whether or not the city of Maricopa adds fluoride to their water, and, um, what I saw was no, but I want to confirm that, or see whether or not, if we do, if there is a plan. Many municipalities are doing away with fluoride in their water due to some very good studies regarding fluoride being a neurotoxin, so, um, I just would like to have their take on that, and some further information about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we'll make sure to ask those questions. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right, seeing none, I will close the call to the public, that'll take us to the consent agenda. This evening, we have consent agenda items 7 dot 1 through 7 dot 3, and I have no speaker cards. I do understand that a council member would like to temporarily pull something for a brief conversation. Councilmember Manfredi?
Mayor, thank you. I had a couple questions about 7.2, um, it's the Red Valley Ranch Phase 1, and if, there we go. Staff is coming up to answer them, I guess.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, council members. Uh, Mayor, if I may, I have a very brief presentation, five slides, if I could run through that quickly.
Sure, perfect.
May I answer some of the questions? Thank you, Abel. Um, good evening, y'all, Rick Williams here with the Planning and Zoning Department, talked to you a little bit about Red Valley Ranch Phase 1. This is a request, uh, by Crescent Bay Land Funds, um, to subdivide approximately 72.35 acres into 287, uh, residential lots. Uh, the ultimate, or I should say, the density for Phase 1 of the development is proposed at 3.97 dwelling units per acre. Now, even though this was approved in the county back years ago, uh, in 2021, we did a minor PAD amendment to it, we also approved a preliminary plat, uh, which has since been extended in, in 2021. They're proposing three different lot sizes on this, a 42-foot wide product, a 50 by 120, and a 55 by 120. Uh, if I could direct your attention to the exhibit on the right there, you'll see that the larger lots are in the northern portion of, uh, Phase 1, smaller lots are to the southern part. It also dedicates not only the roadways, um, but also, uh, 34 open space tracks, uh, for retention basins, um, and open space. It also dedicates, uh, drain adjacements on the east side and the north side, uh, adjacent to Farrell Road as well. Uh, with respect to access and circulation, uh, main access for this phase of development will be via Farrell Road. Uh, Phase 1 will also construct the main north-south, uh, collector road that runs down the middle of the, um, development, uh, otherwise known as North Saddleback Vista Avenue. And I would just point out that, uh, direct access to, um, uh, the Maricopa-Cassagran Highway will be provided, uh, via Murphy Road, which is a half-mile to, uh, the west. So if we could talk a little bit about onsite and offsite improvements associated with this development, and Mayor, what I'd like to do is start, let's start with the onsites. Um, what I've got up here on the, uh, exhibit to the right there is the Red Valley Ranch, uh, again, Phase 1 final plat. Phase 1 final plat. And I've also added in the Elena Trails development as well. Elena Trails has already been platted. It's under construction, and they're going vertical with that development now. So I've tried to, because there's a lot of stuff going on with this map, so I've tried to color-code it for you. So let's start with the onsite improvements for Red Valley Ranch first. With respect to West Farrell Road, and you look at the purple arrow up there to the right at the top, that's the Farrell Road alignment. This development will be responsible for Farrell Road improvements from the northwest corner of their development to West Saddleback, okay? They will also be responsible, as I noted prior, that they'll construct the northwest, I'm sorry, north-south Collector Road through the development as well, as well as provide secondary access, which is that little black arrow and line coming down off of Farrell Road there. Farrell Road will be constructed on their portion of it as a two-lane divided road with a median from that corner all the way to the entrance of their development. I would also note, if you direct your attention to the east side of their property, you'll see a big blue line that starts at the south end of the property, runs up north, and continues to the northwest corner of their property. That's the drainage corridor that's part of the regional flood solution. That will be constructed as well with the first phase of development, and the Red Valley Ranch will be responsible for those improvements, okay? Let's talk a little bit about the offsite improvements, and this is where things are a little more interesting, if I should say. I would first start off with is, we have a coalition of stakeholders in the area that are part of these improvements that are coming up, but there's a timing associated with them. We've got the city involved in it with the CIP project. We've got VW Volkswagen involved. Elena Trails has already made a major contribution to the improvements on this portion of Farrell Road. And then we also, which is in the very northwest corner across the street, we have the Leonard Development with Anderson Farm, who is a major contributor in this as well. So let's first talk about the Farrell Road improvements just north of the Elena Trails. And I've outlined that with the yellow arrows there. And the one thing I would say is, it's not specific. They don't line up. It's not to scale, but it gives you, I think, a pretty good idea of what's going on there. So that is going to be, the way that works is, we know that there's a CIP project that's involved with that area. The blue line that rolls along the top there is part of the CIP project along with that roadway as well. Here's the timing component of that. And please, Ben, if I misspoke, speak on this, feel free to correct me. If the CIP project comes in first, then the city will develop that portion of Farrell Road and the drainage easement to the north to its ultimate capacities. All right, and they'll take the contributions that Elena Trails has made and that Red Valley Ranch has agreed to, and they'll add that to the coffre. I would also point out that Dan Frank, our flood pain administrator, is working on federal dollars that may be associated with that as well. That's in the event that the CIP project comes first. In the event that the Red Valley Ranch project comes first, then they will construct a half-mile of two-lane paved road from north Murphy to that edge of their Farrell Development. And that will suffice until the CIP project comes in. At that point, the city would then construct that Farrell Road to the ultimate with which, and complete the drainage easement to the north as well. Again, coalition, everybody's working together on this, the stakeholders who it, it's been a, you know, heavy lifting at times. It's a major, major project. It's part of a solution that really needs to happen in this area to promote development.
Thank you.
It's conformance with the general plan. It meets the outline of the Red Valley PAD and staff is supporting the request. And based on that, we would ask you all to approve this final plat before you this evening. Mayor, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well, and that concludes my presentation.
Very good. Thank you very much, Rick. Councilmember Manfredi?
Thanks, Rick. Louder than normal. Thanks, Rick. The reason, the whole reason to have you guys give that presentation and pull it off of the consent is because I did have a couple of questions from other folks asking me what was going to happen with the infrastructure there. And I also wanted to just let folks know that this has been something that's been in the works since 2015 with a plan, a change in 2001. We're here at 2005?
Twenty-five.
2025, I meant to say, sorry. Geez, it's been so long. I can't believe it's so long. Eight, 2025. 2025. So this is something that's been in the works for a very long time. It's not something that springs up and we don't plan for it. A lot of the transportation needs, a lot of the infrastructure needs are getting put into place and will be in place for it when it comes. So that was the reason I pulled it and wanted to just have that information out for folks because I got a lot of questions about it. The one question I do have, which I'm sorry if it's coming out of the blue, is on Murphy and Farrell, we, going west on Farrell, we have the culvert there, right? And where are we on that? Do you know, Ben?
I guess I need to ask which culvert we're talking about.
To complete Farrell and pave it so people can take it west.
Yeah, so that's part of this project. We got a federal earmark or congressionally designated spending two years ago. We're moving forward with that project. That's, as Mr. Williams mentioned, part of the CIP project that's listed on here. So we're working together, getting the proper easements together. If I remember correctly, it's next year or the year after that it's in the capital improvement plan.
Perfect. Thank you. And that was another main question people were asking me was, when is that road going to be available? Because when these houses are constructed, people got to get out of there and on to the main roads, and we don't want to just make it all on Honeycutt and, yeah, Honeycutt, really, and Cassagrand Highway. So thanks so much for the information. That's all I was looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Manfredi bringing it up for question and presentation. The reason I say that is, it's important for our residents to understand, this is not a new project. It's been in existence. It's been on the books. It's been counted in terms of housing coming. And I think it's important that residents get it right, but for media to get it right as well. It is not a new set of housing. It's been on the books for a while. So I appreciate you bringing that forward. Are there any other questions before we move back to consent?
Not for me.
And you're okay keeping it on regular consent?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, given that, do I have a motion for consent items 7.1 through 7.3?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Lierman and seconded by Councilmember Manfredi. Any additional questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate it. And thank you, Councilmember Manfredi. That'll take us to our regular agenda item, 8.1. And at this time, it is a presentation from Global Water Resources.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Krieger. I'm Global Water's Chief Operating Officer. And with me today, I have a handful of my colleagues. First, we have Mr. Jake Lenderking, who you'll hear from in a minute. Second, you have Mr. John Corwin, who you also hear from in a second. And then behind them, you have Ms. Beth Huerta, who you know. And then Mr. Andrew Miller, who actually presented last summer during one of our other updates. So thank you for having us. The format that we have today is we have kind of two presentations. First, you're going to hear from Jake on water and legislation. As you all know, those are very intertwined in Arizona now. And as I sometimes joke, every year you think is the craziest year you've seen on it, and every year it tops it, but Jake's got some fantastic information on you, for you on that. And then John's going to provide you an update on the proposed rate case filing that we've been talking about since last year. Also, John's going to provide an update in response to Ms. Montoya's question on the fluoride, so he'll provide an update on that, too. So with that, thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Jake.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Jake Lenderking, Global Water Resources. Today, I'll talk to you about how this works. Hey, I can make it work. Today, I'll talk to you a little bit about background in water resources, both the Colorado River and groundwater. I'll talk a little bit about our designation of assured water supply and how legislation and water augmentation are going to be important to maintaining that assured water supply, adding resiliency to our overall water supply here. So just jumping right in, on the Colorado River, we've all heard about the reduced runoff in the Colorado River for the last 20 years. It's been quite the drought. There's been agreements put in place to address that, both the, both the, sorry, both the interim guidelines passed in 2007 as well as the DCP or Drought Contingency Plan passed in 2019, both to address these lower runoff times. What you see here in this, this really technical graph is snow water equivalent, or the amount of water in the snowpack up in the upper Colorado River watershed. Up along the left axis is the inches of water, and to the bottom, across the bottom, through the right, is time. And you can see the black line is where we're at today, just a little bit below the green, which is normal or average. That's been happening for many years, like I mentioned, about 20 years. And that's why we have those agreements in place. Well, those agreements are going to expire in 2026, at the end of '26. So the big things you're going to see in the paper today are what's happening with the seven basin states, Mexico, and the federal government. They're all negotiating an agreement. You'll see some saber rattling about some potential litigation, perhaps in multiple courts. But the seven basin states have always come to an agreement amongst themselves instead of litigation. Litigation offers a lot of unforeseen consequences, and in a world, you don't know where the court's going to land, although a negotiated agreement provides a lot of certainty. So the basin states, really, as much as you might see in the news, I think they have their head screwed on right, and they're working towards an agreement. And I think we'll see something in the news soon for an agreement, something along the lines of 2027 through 2037 or 2047. It's important to mention that while I'm giving an update about the Colorado River, we don't directly use Colorado River water here. These issues don't directly impact us here. Moving on to groundwater, these are issues that are important across the state. And in fact, there's two major issues that the state is grappling with. One is overpumping in rural areas. We've heard the governor just announced an initiative to try to tackle that. We also see projected unmet demand inside the active management areas, like where we're at here in the Penal or the Phoenix active management areas. Unmet demand is something that the Department of Water Resources finds when they use really sophisticated computer models to take all the puts in and all the takes out of groundwater system over 100 years. So they see risk in this 100-year profile, and they're trying to address that. So these are the major two areas of concern for the state that they've been working on for several years. What does that land us? It lands us in a lot of regulation changes. It's a very busy slide with a lot going on, and I'll start on the first piece, and then I'll fly through a lot. The busyness is one of the most important things to call to on it. The second is that the Penal AMA, the red X right through the middle, was closed to new appropriations of groundwater in the Assured Water Supply Program in 2019. That's getting some new water supplies for new subdivisions. Now, you might ask, well, Global, how do you, how do we do it here? Well, we have a designation of assured water supply that transcends that issue. We proved it up long before this closure, and it was accounted for in the department's models years before the closure. Our designation of assured water supply is for about 23,000 acre feet, and we're using about 9,000 acre feet a year today. So we have a lot of room to grow. Jumping down, I'll just flip through the rest of these really quick. The state formed the Douglas AMA, the Hualapai Valley INA, as well as closed the Haciampa Sub Basin to new assured water supply determinations based on groundwater. Sorry, that's a mouthful. Also, the Phoenix AMA, the state's proposed a new AMA in Hila Bend, as well as a new AMA down in the Wilcox area. So it's going through all of these things in the last five years. Lastly, because groundwater basins are closed to new appropriations, the state went through a new rule process, and it's called the ADOS, the Alternative Designation of Assured Water Supply. That process ended in a new rule last year. While it doesn't directly impact us, it does impact the brothers and sisters over in Cassagrand. Arizona Water Company is now applying for an ADOS, so they can benefit from a water situation like we have here in Maricopa. Moving on into legislation, I mentioned our designation of assured water supply. One of the things we like to think about in legislation is how will that impact our water supplies from a regulatory standpoint? And sometimes we get some really, really good successes. Numerous of us, numerous, numerous of us worked really hard on the Penal stakeholder group for many years. And in 2021, we had a really good bill, SB 1274. It protected some elements of our designation of assured water supply. It allowed for some replating in other areas, and also protected stored water. So there is some really good benefits to legislation, although sometimes, as I'm about to show you, there's a lot of work before you can get to this. In 2024, like Chris said, there's a lot going on at the legislature. When you don't, when you think it's done, there's even more. 660 bills introduced. We tracked 80 of them very specifically. Ultimately, only three water bills were signed into law last year. This year's tracking along the same way with 1,000, over 1,000 bills introduced, 90 bills that we're tracking today. And we hope that there's going to be one or two really good ones that come out of it, which I'll tell you about in just a minute. One of them is this Assured Water Supply Program called Ag to Muni, providing an incentive for development on agricultural lands. Agricultural lands use between three and six acre feet per acre, and our municipal subdivisions are using less than two. So there's a move to try to ensure that development can happen on those and save water. I think it's important to note in this basin in particular, agriculture's a huge important part of the economy. There are partners in so many things, but they are a large water user. And where we can make good common sense policy together, we work really hard on that. Senator Shope has introduced Senate Bill 1611 yesterday that addresses this through a legislative process. It's also working through an administrative process through the executive branch at the Arizona Department of Water Resources through a rulemaking. So there's a lot of people paying a lot of attention to this, and I think we're going to see some positive outcomes in this year, I'm hopeful at least. Moving away from legislation, I want to hop into a project we're doing here that's more directly under our control. Ours, I mean, Global Waters and the city of Maricopa, and that's recharge. We want to recharge the aquifers. Well, what is recharge? A lot of people ask. Well, it's the, managed aquifer recharge is the process of intentionally putting water into the aquifer. And we're going to use our excess recycled water to do that, and it's going to raise water levels or keep them up both, and it'll allow us to save water for the future. There's numerous methods to do this, whether it's direct injection wells, which are expensive, Vedosung wells, recharge trenches, or percolation basins. We're choosing percolation basins as it's an easy process from an O&amp;M standpoint, and it's actually the best way to get water in the ground if you have the land available. Well, thankfully, to our partners here in the city of Maricopa and to Congressman Greg Stanton, we together have a nice grant for this. We have an $8 million recharge project, which we are working with the city of Maricopa to locate just south of our Campus 1 water reclamation facility. And it's sponsored with $6 million of federal funds. So it's going to have two or three percolation basins. It's going to have, offer some wet and dry cycling in those basins, interpretive signage, and we expect to get between 400 and 600 million gallons in it each year. And that'll be just additive to our overall water security, our water supplies, and ultimately adding diversity to those water supplies. Last thing I wanted to mention on a big, big deal that we're working on is water augmentation through Bartlet Dam Water Supplies. This is actually a picture of Horseshoe Reservoir. It's there because it is the result of the Verde River Sedimentation Mitigation Study. This is a large study put together between SRP and the Bureau of Reclamation to figure out what to do as this reservoir silts in or fills with sediment. Ultimately, the best outcome for this, the best alternative, is to raise the next downstream reservoir, Bartlet Dam. That allows for not only mitigating the lost storage capacity in Horseshoe Reservoir, but it also increases storage capacity that can be available for others like ourselves here at Global Water and the city of Maricopa. So we've been working with Pickwa on this. This is the Penal. This is the Penal County Water Augmentation Authority, where both Global Water and City of Maricopa are members. Councilmember Marsh serves on the board along with me, and we've been working with it and pretty excited about how much progress it's made. New dams in Arizona have not been something of, you know, happening very often, but this one's working out really well. In fact, building a new dam has been seen by environmental groups as better than trying to dredge Horseshoe, because you had to put the sediments somewhere, and the effort to dredge the bottom of a lake is huge, energy intensive, and a large, large amount of pollution created to do that. So right now, everybody's in alignment to keep trucking along on this, and it's a really long project, it's a really expensive project. PICWA's capacity is looking at about 2,000 acre feet per year, of which Global Water is seeking 1,007, sorry, 1,041 acre feet of that. And overall cost preliminary, it's gone up since then, was 860 million, 11 million for Global Water. We've been working really hard at PICWA to figure out how to pay for this, and we would like to do financing. One of the things that PICWA had as a weird attribute there was that they were created as a one-off government entity, more around water and less around governance. So their statutes around bonding was a little bit different, a little bit unique. So we sought out some expert counsel at PICWA, and we found some tweaks to that. And Senator Shoup yesterday introduced Senate Bill 1616 on PICWA, just making some small tweaks. I really hope this is one of those three water bills that makes it through this year to allow PICWA to help carry the financing costs of this really important water supply. Lastly, just wanted to say, that's not all we're doing. We're looking at water leases, we're looking at purchasing long-term storage credits, water exchanges, and even looking out at Harkaway La Valley imported water. So lots of irons in the fire as we think about long-term sustainability and resiliency of our water supplies and our designation of assured water supply. So just high level, in summary, water is very scarce, Colorado River's in drought. We're seeing a massive amount of local regulation change in the last five years. So we're really looking at how do we maintain our designation or maintain our overall water supplies, making sure we're resilient in the face of these things. And the first thing we can do is recharge, and recharge with the City of Maricopa is just great to do and great partnership. And then next up would be Bartlet Dam, and after that, we'll be lining up some of those other projects as well. With that, I'm happy to take any questions or bring up John.
Thanks, Jake. I do have a question, and there may be a couple more questions for you. I really appreciate that status quo has not been Global Waters' mode, you know, energy level. Status quo is not what you guys are into. You're always looking for additional water resources. I appreciate this. I did share with you guys that I got to do a flyover of Bartlet Dam, and they explained that all to me, and when I came back and you agreed, yes, Global Water is in the picture, that made it even more exciting for me to know that we could get water from Bartlet Dam potentially. My question to you is, just like the $6 million for the aquifer recharge and the partnership with the city, that funding offsets expenses that have to go into your rate case. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so my question is, I myself and Councilmember Nor and Councilmember Manfredi are headed to DC in March, and we want to know, are there other projects that would qualify for grants at the federal level that we can move forward for you, with you, in partnership with you, so that additional costs are not included in either the current rate case or future rate cases? Everything we can offset is important to our residents. So you may not have an answer tonight, but please give that some thought and let us know. And according to Katie Proctor, we need to probably know by, you know, the third week of February, so short notice, but anything that you see that we can do in terms of a grant would be wonderful, and we're happy to partner with you.
Mayor, council members, I love this question. I actually was working on some of this today with Dan Frank. All right. Dan Frank is working with me as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, and one of the three projects we put forth when the recharge funding came about, the Army Corps of Engineers is bringing back up through their ranks. So happy to circle that back through Dan as well as other projects.
That would be great. Yeah, if you and Dan meet with Katie and Ben, that would be fantastic. Counsel, any additional questions for Jake? Yes, Councilmember Leirman.
Thank you for your presentation. Oftentimes, we get questioned about how Maricopa can handle the growth specifically related to water supply. Can you talk a little bit about the uniqueness that Maricopa has compared to other areas of the region and why we specifically can handle the growth that we anticipate?
Yeah, yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Leirman, thanks for the great question. It can get really complex in the weeds, so if I go there, just stop me and redirect me. Really simply, we have a very plentiful aquifer beneath us. Water levels in some areas of town are 65 feet below land surface. Other places in other towns are hundreds of feet below land surface. Our aquifer also extends to about 3,000 feet below land surface. So we have, you know, north of 2,500 vertical feet of aquifer there. Those are the hydrogeologic characteristics that we were able to, in our application, demonstrate to ADWR that there's water there, and in their sophisticated model, saw that there is the physical available water there underneath Maricopa, and we were able to obtain that designation of assured water supply or DAS, and that's the one that's 22,914 acre feet per year that we're allowed to use, and we're using about 9,000 acre feet a year. So we have this really long runway in that water supply. So we're geographically situated in a good place, and we have a permit that firms that up.
And not living with what we have, looking for more.
Yes, yes. There's always the issue of regulation changes, so we're not sitting on our haunches.
Very good.
And I know, I'm really proud that we recycle 30% of our water supply as well, and so that is something that we can be really proud of and is unique to our community as well.
Yes. Mayor, council member, we, outside of the technical designation of assured water supply and the water resource issues, Global Water does many things. We have a very robust conservation program, and John, I don't know if you're getting into this, but we implement total water management where we use smart water meters. The net result is our overall water use has the second lowest as measured by gallons per capita per day, so our GPCD rate is second lowest of all the designated providers in the Greater Phoenix and Penal AMAs, and recycled water is also a really big part of that. We work really hard to do the right thing here.
Councilmember Nor, did you have a question? Wanted to talk about recycling. Very good. Anyone else with an additional? Yes, Councilmember Marsh.
Yes, Jake, I want to thank you for your participation in PICWA and the Penal Partnership Water Resources Committee. I've worked with you for several years on those, and you bring knowledge, experience, wisdom, and communication skills to the game, to the benefit of the City of Maricopa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Wade.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate your presentation. I have a question that is kind of not personal, because I may not be the only one who asked this question, but can you slightly describe what recharge means, both wet and dry? Are you talking about the fact of recharge?
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Wade, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wade. I, horrible tiles, excuse me. Wet and dry cycling has to do with the ability for the basins to work. So when you get a lot of water in the basin for many days in a row, it tends to clog it up a little bit. You get some silting in, and you also can get vegetation growth, and both of those are hindrances to actual getting water in the ground. So you would dry up a basin, sometimes till it or rip it so that some of the suspended solids that got caught at the top break up, and you enhance your recharge ability. So you don't keep all of the basins wet all the time. You rotate them so that you can have higher recharge rates.
Very cool. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Very good. Any additional questions? Seeing none, we will love to have John speak to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. And I feel like I always learn when Jake gets up here and talks, so great job. Mayor Smith, Vice Mayor Wade, council members, thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. I would like to address the question on fluoride first, and then I'll jump into the presentation on the rate case. And so I guess to answer the question, do we add fluoride to the water? The answer is no, we do not. Fluoride is a naturally occurring element in groundwater, and our source of water is groundwater, so that is the source. We have a couple of things that we've done to address it. First of all, we added another well to our lineup, so we blend all of our water sources into one, and that allows us to blend out things like fluoride to lower levels. The notice that we had to send out last summer was for the secondary maximum contaminant level, so that's a, so there's the maximum contaminant level, so the MCL, which if you're above that, which at four milligrams per liter, you would be considered out of compliance. The secondary MCL, you're not necessarily out of compliance, but you are required to send out a notification to your customers, which we had to do last summer. And so since that notification, we've been able to make some adjustments, add a well to the lineup, and we've been consistently below that secondary MCL level around, you know, 1.7 milligrams per liter. So that's where we stand right now, and as we continue to add water sources to our capacity, we'll be able to continue to push that down. And we are also looking at centralized treatment options down the road as well. So we're doing a lot of work to address that in other constituents as well. Hopefully that answers the question. All right, so moving to the presentation. All right. So real quick, I'll try to keep this short, but you know, obviously, I'm here to present on our pending rate case application, and it's been really important to us to be out in front of that and communicate it. And so we started the communication really about a year ago now, and you know, this is a follow-up to that initial communication. This rate case specifically for our water and wastewater utilities in Penal County, you know, it's one of our most consequential rate cases in our history because it addresses what we call our Southwest Plant. So that's, I'll get into that a little bit more in detail, but it's facilities that were built back in 2008, and then ultimately, no changes will be made until the middle of 2026, even though the rate application is going in likely in March. So it's a fairly lengthy process, and it'll take some time to work its way through the Corporation Commission. So the agenda really, tonight I'll talk about what are the major drivers for the rate application. I'll talk about the ACC timeline and how the rate case gets processed, and then kind of a new topic that's surfaced at the Corporation Commission, and that's formula rates. So I'll give a little bit of information on that. And then we added some appendix to the presentation just to highlight some of the projects that we've done over the last few years as well. So what's the need for the rate case? Really, three drivers there. The first one being inflation. Our current rates are based on a 2019 cost structure, so as we all know, there's been significant inflation between 2019 and our current test year, which is 2024. Additionally, as we've, the City of Maricopa has continued to grow. We've had to stay out in front of that with significant investment in our utility infrastructure, so we've continued to invest in the community. And then lastly, like I mentioned, our Southwest Plant, which represents about $60 million of investment that was started back in 2008 and has been put into service as of 2023, and so we're able to move that into kind of the rate-making process. So I'll discuss that a little bit more in detail as well. So on the inflation front, like I said, we're currently operating on a 2019 test year or cost structure. Inflation since 2019 is about 26% for general inflation and about 28% for utility inflation. So obviously, that's pretty significant, and that affects us in kind of every aspect of our business, from labor, cost of fuel, cost of electricity, chemicals, everything that it takes to run a utility, those costs have gone up over time. Additionally, as we've continued to invest heavily in the community, the cost of construction is, the inflation on construction has been quite significant as well, and so that's impacted our construction costs and the cost to actually develop new infrastructure. Additionally, you know, we're building the infrastructure to support things, to support growth, and this chart shows, or these charts show, really the growth that we've experienced both on the water side and the wastewater side. And so the top right, you'll see really our peak demand for water deliveries in the suburb for the past four years, so June, July, and August are our peak months, and we have to build our infrastructure for those peak periods. And so we've gone, we've seen a peak of about 10 million gallons per day this past summer, and that's about a 37% increase as compared to 2021. And likewise, on the wastewater side, we're up about 21% in wastewater that we have to treat on a daily basis or a monthly basis as compared to 2021. So again, we're building the infrastructure and capacity to meet those demands, and we have to build that in advance of the construction and growth of the city. A few takeaways on that, you know, we've done that, we've met the demand, we will continue to meet the demand, and as Jake highlighted, we're doing that in a sustainable way with our designation of assured water supply, recharge, and other things like that. So we continue to plan for the future, both from an infrastructure perspective and also from a water perspective. This slide just highlights a number of the projects. It's not all-inclusive, but a number of the projects that we've completed over the past four or five years to stay in front of the growth that the city is experiencing. You know, that ranges from well rehabilitations to new water distribution centers being constructed, adding capacity to our wastewater treatment plant, so a whole gamut of projects that have been completed and tens of millions of dollars of investment to make those projects come to fruition. And then lastly, the Southwest Plant, so I'll discuss this a little bit more in detail. So again, this represents wastewater plant, a water distribution center, well, collection lines, water distribution lines, all that were constructed back in, you know, the 2006, 2007 timeframe, when the market was booming and home developers were moving to what we call the Southwest area of Maricopa. So that's approximately Papa Go in 347. And obviously, the Great Recession hit, and those homes didn't come to fruition, and so we had about, we had, those facilities essentially never went into service. And so we've sat on those assets for close to 20 years now. They represent about $60 million of investment in the initial investment and the recommissioning. And to give context, in our last rate case, we had about $118 million in kind of a rate investment. So it's pretty sizable and meaningful to our company, that $60 million. And so this rate case will address that and move those assets into rates because they are now serving homes and, you know, we're providing water and treating wastewater. It will also address the premature revenue collection issue that we identified last summer and had a series of meetings on, and I'll discuss that a little bit more in a minute, but this rate case will also, you know, bring that to a conclusion as well. So hopefully, you know, ultimately, the goal of the rate case is to find a good solution for the Southwest Plant and, you know, find something that works for all stakeholders. The timeline of the rate case, or the process, so we're sitting here today, February 4th, we will file a notice of intent for our rate case, and then we will actually file the rate case likely in March. Then it goes to the Arizona Corporation Commission. Their staff will do a very in-depth audit and review of all of our information, our financials, the investments that we've made, the capital deployment. They will issue a report, and ultimately, a staff judge, sorry, administrative law judge will hear the case and issue what they call a recommended opinion in order. So that's kind of the recommended solution to the rate case. Ultimately, the five elected commissioners will vote on it and decide if they approve it, modify it, or do something else. And ultimately, whatever the decision is, nothing will change until the middle of 2026 as anticipated, so likely May, June, July of next year. So that's the general process. We will continue to provide updates and educate the community and provide, you know, information along through that 18-month process. All right, so this slide really provides kind of the details of the proposed rates, and this highlights kind of the median water customer who uses about 5,000 gallons per month. So the proposed increase on the water side is about $4 per month in Phase 1, and then another $3 in Phase 2, which would be in 2027, so a total of $7. And on the wastewater side, it would be a phase, or two phases of $2 each, so about $4 total. So that equates to about 11% increase, and again, that's between test years of 2019 to 2024. So it's about, it's just a little over 2% increase per year in that five-year window, if you look at it that way, 11% overall. When you compare that to overall inflation of 26%, it's obviously significantly less than that 26%. Additionally, you know, we plan to, you'll notice that the wastewater fee proposed increase is a little bit less than the water side, and again, that's to address the premature revenue collection issue where, you know, the implementation of rates is offset by that collection of revenue. So that will be a lower increase for customers because of that. So that's how So that's how that will be addressed through this process. So with that, moving on just a little bit, kind of my last slide here, just to discuss kind of a new topic at the, the commission, and that's a, something called formula rates. And really, what that is, is the, the commission has recognized that the, the rate case process can be long and cumbersome, and specifically for utilities that are deploying a lot of capital in fast-growing communities, it's not the ideal process. So they're, they've approved a framework for what's called a, for, for formula rates. And essentially, what that allows utilities to do is implement their investments into new rates kind of on a yearly basis, so it's smaller incremental rate increases as opposed to one larger rate increase maybe every five years. And so that still requires the utility to go to the commission through a rate case and get that, a plan approved to, to implement that. So we will provide that proposal during this rate case as well, and, and we'll, we'll keep you updated on the process of that as well. So with that, happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, John. Council, what questions do you have? Questions, comments? Councilmember Marsh?
I'm very pleased to see the rates proposed be so much less than even the inflation. I don't know how you're doing that. I took some business classes in college, and I can't figure that out, but it really sounds good for the users.
Thank you.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Yeah, John, thanks so much for your presentation. Jake, you also. When, when you look at the, the development that happens in the City of Maricopa, none of it happens really without the hard work that's happening at Global Water. Because without the assured, the DAWs, without the designated assured water supply, a lot of it doesn't happen. And a lot of people talk about the water supply and say, where, where is the water coming from? And I tell them, I'm like, it's DAWs, and they're like, pause, and I'm like, no, DAWs. And it just goes downhill from there, because I'm not as smart as you guys, when it comes to talking about water supply. But when we talk about it, it's not only the water supply that's important, it's the infrastructure work that goes into getting a development up and running. So just like Red, Red, what was it? The one we just talked about? Huh? Yeah, Red Ranch, just like that one there. If you, I, I'm thinking it's you guys, I'm not sure, so I might come off as stupid here, but coming down Murphy Road, there's a big black pipe going down towards Red Ranch, and is that water?
Yeah, that's for construction water.
Yeah. So that water eventually will be at Red Ranch, it'll be underground, all that stuff will go there. And then when people are saying, I want a supermarket out in the middle of nowhere, right? Supermarket's not going to run a million-dollar pipe to put in water and/or sewer, but when a development happens and they put in three hundred, five hundred houses, and they, they pay for that large pipe and water to come in and the sewer to come in, that makes it so that when the supermarket wants to come in, they only need a small piece of pipe from the road to the supermarket, allowing them to actually build. So the, the infrastructure that you guys put in brings us all the other stuff that we need, right? And of course, there's going to be increases in prices. We pay more for eggs today than we spent yesterday. We pay more for, eggs are a bad example. I had to mortgage my house to have an omelet, I don't know. But we pay more today for everything than we were paying before, and more than eleven percent, right? So I'm paying more than eleven percent more, I'm paying eleven percent more, sorry, more than eleven percent more than for everything else over the last five years. And we're looking at two thousand and nineteen rate case in this case. So, you know, a lot of people say, tell them they can't raise rates. Oh, it's a business, right? And a business has to be able to make money for them to continue making the investments that they make within the community. And you have to remember, and people don't remember this, mostly because most of us are new, and unless you lived here back in two thousand and eight, in two thousand and five, in two thousand, right? Raise your hands if you did, probably not many go up, one or two, right? But unless you remember those days when there was multiple water companies in the City of Maricopa, and Global Water came in and rescued the city from quite possibly a mess, right? A Flint, Michigan-type mess, really, if you think of it that way. And the work that's gone in to making what we have here today with the designated assurance of water and, and, and the infrastructure that's been installed and everything that we have going on, it's a good thing. And I understand nobody likes a, a rate case, because everybody gets upset, they're going to pay more. But the reality is, stuff costs more today. The pipe costs more, the, the wrenches cost more, the trucks cost more, the gas costs more, everything costs more. And that means every business is seeing increased rates. So that was all I had to say. And thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Manfredi, anyone else? Very good, thank you, John. Chris, do you have anything to close with? All right, very good. At that, we will adjourn this meeting.